Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you. I'd like to call to order the City of Madison regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting for July 29, 2021. If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands here, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. King, roll call, please. Here.
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 Thank you, Ms. King. Board, if you'll take a moment and review the agenda. We need a motion and a second to approve.
So move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Ferrer and a second by Ms. Lesman. All those in favor of the agenda in front of you, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Agenda passes. Dr. Nichols, we don't have any presentations listed, but I'd like to check with you. Do we have any presentations this evening?
No, sir, Mr. President.
We'll move straight into public comments. This is the time in the meeting when the public wishes to speak. They can come forward and address the board and the audience, and they have three minutes to, to, to address us.
Justin Alexander.
Hi. So I spoke at the hearing on the rezoning as well, but I want to say that the virtual school program that we had this past year was really beneficial for my special education kids because they were allowed the continuity of care of having local teachers as well as therapists. It was, it was really disappointing when you canceled the local virtual option because that means they can't have therapists in the school district, and that's really difficult for these kids that thrive with, with continuity of care. It's really hard for them to bounce around from different buildings with the rezoning to different therapists with going from the different virtual options. We feel like we really didn't have a choice on whether to do virtual or in-person school. We feel like that was kind of taken from us because what they need is to have a steady treatment plan that helps them receive an equitable education, and that is difficult to get when you are doing virtual therapy for speech and physical therapy and occupational therapy. I mean, I don't know if any of you have seen virtual physical therapy, but it's basically useless. They can't help you move. It's very difficult. It's frustrating for the therapists because they can't do what they need to do, and it's hard for them to see those kids not be able to reach their full potential based on that. So it's really difficult to have that thrown at us, that virtual is gone, and we must choose in-person or have all of the therapies that the kids really thrive on be taken from them. That was disappointing and frustrating. I honestly expected something better, and I know that there's a lot of backend things with virtual school that I don't understand and I won't be able to see, and I know that's really difficult for all of you and that you get a lot of complaints, and I appreciate the volunteer time that you put in for this. But it was frustrating for me, and now with, with masks being optional, I don't know what's right with that. I don't know what the right decision is, but it is frustrating to have those choices taken where we have to be thrust into this in order for them to receive an equitable education and to see, you know, just how hostile the situation has gotten from every side. So I appreciate the work that you're doing, but I just hope that everyone will really focus on what's best for the kids because the special education kids always tend to be the, the afterthought in everything, and, you know, at some point, it would be great to have them be more of a priority on things. So I appreciate it again, and that's just, that's what I had to say. So, thanks.
May I ask a question? Ma'am, can I ask you a clarification question? I'm confused because you say virtual is good for virtual.
Virtual education is good because they can have a teacher that does live lessons with them, and that is great. But the therapy is beneficial in person, specifically of speech therapy and physical and occupational therapy. I have a child with a praxia of speech. It's a neurological condition. He benefits from having his face actually touched and moved because his motor planning skills are not the same as what we have. So he benefits from that. He was able to have one-on-one therapy in his local school building during virtual school. That is taken away from him with the state-based option. He will lose that, and so he will have virtual therapy with that, and it's not the same. So he was able to have his virtual classroom where he actually did very well. He was thriving in that. I know not every child is. It's different for everyone. But he did very well in it. All of my kids did, and then they had their therapies in-person in that one-on-one setting, which was great for them, and it worked out very well for all of the kids. They were able to be at home for their school and not be in that massive crowd, and also still have therapy options. But with the state-based, that, that's not available. They don't get to have a therapist in their building.
Okay, now I understand. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next person is Stephanie Walker.
Stephanie Walker.
The next person is Andrea Morais.
Andrea Morais.
Hi, actually Adriana Morais. A little bit, just a so I wanted to ask you all a question that I actually emailed you, but it was this afternoon. Maybe you haven't had, had the time to see. So I'm very concerned about this question. Actually thinking all the time, it's like the other mom said, it's hard to know what the right thing is to do. But I wanted to ask you, so last year, when school started in August, we had a positivity rate of 14.5%, and we all started virtual. And as you said, my boy, he was, he really loved his year in virtual. We chose to continue in virtual afterwards. But then the school came back in mid-September, and the positivity rate was on 8.5 at that time. It was considered, so in the beginning, it was very high risk. At that time, it was high risk, but kind of, you know, it was almost, the limit is eight, so it was limit. And the school started very safely with universal masking and the protections, the divisions, class divisions, and what else? Alternate schedules for it to be to have the, 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 the adequate space. And then now, unfortunately, we're back to a very high risk situation. So we have a positivity rate of 11.5 at that time. And so I ask you, and maybe you can clarify to me, and we will be able to make, to make our decision. Actually, we're kind of going back and forth with what to do. How can the kids go back safely right now with just optional masking? So that's my very concerning question, and I'd like to know what you, what you think, what's the reasoning behind your decision? Maybe it's, I think, maybe for me and for all the parents, it would be nice to clarify. And if maybe you could consider, I know it's hard. It's very, like the other moms said, very divided, and we've seen it. The country is not only us, but if maybe you could consider universal masking, at least for the younger ones, like less than 11, that can't be vaccinated yet, or at least until they can be vaccinated, which love for all of them to be without masks and very freely, but without vaccine and without other protections and just, just optional masking, that maybe even if I send my kid with a mask, maybe his friends will say, oh, my gosh, you have a mask. Why? And be pressured and maybe bullying. So that's it. If you could give me a question and maybe think about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's me again. My name is Patricia Batchelor. I'm the president of the Madison City Council of PTAs. As we embark on this school year, I want to reintroduce everyone to the overall purpose of PTA, which is to connect families and schools. We are not your grandma's PTA. PTA is no longer just for stay-at-home parents and teachers with nothing else to do. In fact, the PTAs here in Madison City Schools are made up of working parents, single parents, grandparents, and other extended family, as well as local businesses. Some of you in this room have heard me say this before, but for those of you here today or watching from home that may not know, PTA's mission is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. Anyone who cares about our students and our schools belongs in the PTA, and this is the best time ever to join. I'm here to encourage families to get connected with their school's PTA now because new school years come with the flood of new information. PTAs are plugged into the communication channels at each school, and we're here to help your family get acclimated and your questions answered as best we can. Our whole job is to welcome you, support our teachers, and staff, and above all, support and advocate for every student. Each Madison City School has a PTA, and most can be found on social media or through your school website. We don't ask for much of your time, and we don't expect you to show up for everything that happens at school. In fact, most PTA members work and aren't available during the day. You can share your gifts and talents in many ways, such as sharing suggestions, networking opportunities, or financial support. Joining PTA gives you the satisfaction of knowing that you've helped to engage our students and enrich their experience at school. So one of the PTA myths is that PTA membership never expires and that you only have to join once. But in fact, the PTA is required to pay state and national membership dues every year. Your PTA membership is valid for only the current school year, so you have to rejoin. So Madison City PTA has a way for everyone to do that, and we're calling it the Madison Mega Membership, and that allows any community leader and resident to support every single Madison school. So they join all of the PTAs for $100. So that's 11 schools for $100 worth of support. So with our membership at any school individually or through the Mega Membership, we are offering our Madison PTA member perks. So these are discounts to local businesses, and so we would just like to thank those businesses and for the Chamber of Commerce for helping it make it happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. There are no further public comments? We have additional Ms.
Can, can you come to Ms. King?
Can you come to Ms. King and get signed in?
It's okay. You can do it.
Yeah, it's fine. No, it's fine.
Hello. I actually just have one quick question. Superintendent Nichols, can you just answer what your plans are for CRT, Critical Race Theory?
Ma'am, I'm not, this is the public comment time, and I normally don't respond to questions during that time, but I'll be glad to call you and give you any answer you want, but I normally don't get into discussions in public comment.
So you don't have an answer right now?
I've made an answer when other people came, and I'll be glad to call you and give you that answer.
Nothing?
Oh, I didn't say that. I just said I don't normally do that in public comment time.
Okay, thank you.
Well, hello, Dr. Nichols and board members. You received from us probably a couple of hours ago an email with a letter imploring you to put together a mask mandate for everyone, beginning with open house and the start of school next week. I'm a parent of two kids at Horizon Elementary, Vivian and Theo, and my longtime friend Scott. Newberry is a parent of Cora and William at Rainbow, and so we would just like to read that letter to you.
The 2021 school year was a resounding success. Your leadership enabled teachers and administrators to provide a nurturing, safe, and effective learning environment in the face of a global pandemic. Use rational, data-driven, decision-making processes that incorporated guidance from health authorities as well as community and state-level data on COVID cases and outbreaks. Our plea is to continue to use the data-driven strategy in this school year. Last year, classes began virtually. You were able to gather data on the virus and its spread by phasing in in-person learning. That's not an option this year. Absent any case data from students or staff, the only thing you have is what we currently know about COVID, the Delta variant, and its spread in the community. Here's what we know. The Delta variant currently accounts for more than 80% of all cases in the United States. It spreads two to three times faster, reproduces more quickly in our cells, and a person infected with Delta may be contagious sooner. Madison County itself is currently experiencing a surge in cases and an increase in hospitalizations, both primarily caused by Delta. Last year, most of the data at the start of the school year showed that COVID did not easily spread to children, nor did children spread it among themselves. The data for the Delta variant indicates that not only do children have a higher chance of contracting COVID, but they also spread it more easily. We know vaccines prevent severe illness, hospitalizations, and death, even for the Delta variant. We know that since April, 97% of COVID deaths in Alabama have been in unvaccinated patients. We know that vaccinations for children under 12 are not yet available and may not have approval until mid-winter. We know that masking works. The choice to wear a mask is a choice to protect those around you. Masks are the most effective when everyone around you is wearing them. Why the AAP and CDC both recommend it. Just today, the Alabama Department of Public Health updated the recommendation to include universal masking to prevent the spread of COVID. They indicate that, quote, "local school boards may issue a directive for masks as recommended by the guidance." This year is different from last year. The Delta variant is here now and is spreading in young and old, vaccinated and not vaccinated. Children under 12 have no protection from Delta unless all of their peers mask. Your website, last sentence, says that your mission is to, quote, "protect, provide all students a nurturing, safe, and effective learning environment." Do so. Thank you.
Good evening, and just thank you for taking the time to listen to a parent's concern. I have three kids. All of them are in Madison City Schools. We bought a house specifically in the city of Madison, as I'm sure everybody else did, specifically for the quality of schools and to make sure that our children are set up for success. I'd be lying if I said I wasn't, you know, concerned about the upcoming school year. I know as a parent, you know, we're concerned about our kids every day of the week for 18 million different reasons. But this specifically because it seems while not, while it can't be 100% prevented, it can at least be mitigated to a certain degree, especially for my two younger kids who are too young to have, to be able to be vaccinated. That's kind of the real crux for, you know, our family right now is like, we don't really know, I mean, we can only do what we can do, and they have no choice. We have no choice for them with regard to whether they can get vaccinated right now. And there's no virtual option this year, and I understand how much of a heavy lift this is, and I understand how much work goes into a school year every year. But our concern is, what if, you know, our two younger kids who are unable to be vaccinated right now, what, what if they contract? What if they contract this virus to no fault of their own? Not only from the, the potential health risks and yes, you know, and, and yes, there, there is some information to suggest that it's not as severe in children as it is in adults or the elderly, but you're only concerned about your kids. It happens to your kids. It matters to you, to your specific circumstance. My wife is a cancer survivor. You know, she has, she's been working at home for, since this whole thing started. And so we just have our concern about not being able to mitigate and not being able to have the choice. They cannot do this. So since they cannot do this, what happens if? Since they cannot do X, what happens in the case of Y? And we, the other question that I have is, since there is no virtual option and a child or a student gets contact traced and is told that you have to stay home for two weeks or 10 days or whatever the guidance is, because I'm not actually familiar with the guidance, honestly, in that situation. I have, I've looked for it, and I haven't been unable to find. So does that mean that my kid just has to sit home for the next 10 days, next 14 days? Will we pick an up package from school? I mean, what is the contingency? Last time, it was like, okay, you'll just go to school on virtual, you'll watch your lessons, and you're turning your form. So I just ask you to take all of those things into consideration. You know, especially for parents of children who have, cannot be vaccinated right now. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any further public comments? Seeing none, we will close public comments. We will move into business action items. Dr. Nichols, business action items.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval the consent agenda containing items A, Minutes dash 21 dash 17 of July the 15th, and Minutes number 21 dash 18 of July 27, 2021. Also in the consent agenda items is a bid 2021 dash 13 for student safety and content filtering from CDW dash G presented as the low bid for $73,200, and D, a bid for 2021 dash 14 wireless hearing impaired equipment from Sunova USA at the price for one year of $29,040.
Board, you have before you the superintendent's recommendation for the consent agenda. I would like to pull out 21 18, Minutes 21 18, which is item B. So if we can have a motion and a second for A, C, D, is there an E?
That's it.
Yes, sir.
That's it.
For A, C, and D.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Holsy and a second by Mr. Ferrer. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. And now we will do the consent agenda for item B. Item B, if I can have a motion and a second.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Ferrer and a second by Mr. Cummings. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain?
Abstain.
Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval bid number 2021 dash 10. These are Chromebooks from Troxel Communications, representing the lowest responsible bid, meeting all specifications at the cost of $3,000, 3,355,440.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of bid 2021 dash 10 for Chromebooks from Troxel Communications. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Cummings and a second by Mr. Ferrer. Dr. Nichols?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, members of the board, this will purchase 7,200 Chromebooks that will take us to a one-to-one across the district with 11-inch touchscreens, four gigabyte of RAM. Also, will cover a four-year warranty for coverage and damage listed on these bids, as well as picking up the four-year existing warranty for the 5,300 Chromebooks that we had already purchased last year. As, as the board knows, we are using our Esser funds, some of those to do that. And at the same time, knowing that we will need to buy and purchase in the future sometime 12,000 Chromebooks or more, we are already putting away each year in the budget, a million to a million and a half dollars to have that money set aside. So when those run their course, we can then be ready to purchase the next round of them. So Mr. Payon and folks have worked on this. Mr. Payon, any comment on the Chromebooks? All right. Well, thank you for, you and Eric for your work in the, in Finance Department.
Board, question, comment?
Which funds are we using for this?
Jenna, is it Esser 3 funds?
Yeah. Where that fund came from?
All those came to us through the federal government. This was the last round of those. I think we got somewhere $7 million, $6 million of those. Felt like this was a good opportunity for us to get to that one-to-one utilizing those. We were able to make it through with the laptops we had last year, but we had to pull many of those from schools. And as you know, we bought 5,300 last year to kind of get us up to speed, and this would get us initiative where every student in Madison City Schools would have that.
Thank you.
Anything else, board? Seeing nothing else, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval bid number 2021 dash 12 for Apple MacBooks from Apple Inc. They are the responsible bidder and low bid with a cost of $772,800.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of bid 2021 dash 12 for Apple MacBooks from Apple Inc. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Holsy and a second by Ms. Lesman. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the board, these are MacBooks that we use with our staff across the district. They haven't been up, we haven't upgraded many of those in a while. So this will get our, not only our administrators, but teachers that utilize the MacBook side. It covers a four-year warranty, and then we'll be able to take some of those that are still usable and reallocate them for certain programs, design programs and other areas across the district. And again, we're using our Esser 3 funds for that.
Board, any discussion? Do, do most teachers use the MacBook or the PC, or is it just, is it by preference, or?
Well, we, probably by preference and area. We probably have, out of 1,100 employees, probably half use a Windows-based unit. Others use a Mac unit. Some of those are by design, by choice. Uh, some of those are by design, by choice. Uh, most of our software and our data packages such as Power School, our new package, who will run on either. So, um, but there are some specific areas. We have art classes and design classes that, that lend themselves to better to be used with them, with Mac. And we kind of focus in, uh, project lead the way may have its software in one platform. So we kind of have an option of those so that we can meet whatever the, the software demand is for the person and the class that they're teaching.
Good answer. You didn't get primed on that.
Yes, sir. Yes. I'm, I'm watching them, they're nodding their head back there, so.
Anything else, board? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstain? Motion passes. We will move to personnel actions. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval of the contracts as presented for you for supplemental work for Madison City Schools.
Or the superintendent recommends approval of the supplemental contracts that you have before you. Can these be taken as a group? Seeing that a group's fine, can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Ferrer. Any discussion, board? We'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstain? Contracts pass, Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I also recommend for your approval of the list of substitutes for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Board, can these be taken as a group? Seeing that a group's fine, can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Cummings and a second by Ms. Lesman. Any discussion, board? With no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstain? Substitute list pass. Dr. Nichols, personnel actions.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval of the personnel actions as presented before you for resignations, transfers, extended leaves and other areas on the personnel agenda.
Board, the superintendent recommends the personnel actions that you have before you. Can these be taken as a group?
Yes, sir.
With a group being fine, can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ferrer and a second by Ms. Lesman. Any discussion? With no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstain? Personnel actions pass. Dr. Nichols, are there rec- uh, recognition that you'd like to make out of personnel actions?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to recognize two new members of our administrative teams uh, that are here with us tonight. Um, both of these individuals have done a tremendous job in the classroom and also supporting our school district. I'd like to acknowledge our principals for their work in interviewing Shannon and Carmen. But also, um, we involved our central office staff as well in the interview process. I'd like to introduce first Tabitha Odom. Tabitha's here with, um, Brian, her husband, Emma Claire. And, uh, she has been with us since two thousand and thirteen. And in the last, since two thousand and seventeen, uh, she has served as our instructional partner at Liberty Middle School. And she will now become the assistant principal at Liberty Middle School. And we're excited, uh, for Tabitha's new journey and, um, look forward to what she will do and work with the team that Mr. Brown leads. So welcome to the administrative team, Tabitha. Would you like to say a few words?
I'm so excited to be here. Uh, so I'd like to first thank the board, Dr. Nichols and Mr. Brown for this opportunity. I'd specifically like to thank the board for its emphasis on growing teacher leaders in our school system because I am a direct beneficiary of that focus and I'm very grateful for it. Um, I am thrilled to continue working alongside Mr. Brown, Dr. Hamilton and Mr. Foy. They, along with Dr. Stewart, have supported my goals and helps prepare me for this role. My family is here with me tonight and I must thank my husband, Brian, and my daughter, Emma Claire, for all of their love and support. Um, I can get up every day and head to Liberty Middle and put forth one hundred percent effort into serving our students and teachers because of the support system I have at home. And I want to publicly thank them for that. Um, I cannot wait to help Mr. Brown welcome our students back to Liberty for a fantastic year. Uh, Liberty's team is the best team and I am proud to serve our students and families in this new role. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, it's also my pleasure to introduce the new assistant principal at Mill Creek, Ms. Kylie Reichardt. Kylie has been, uh, teaching for twenty-one years. Uh, in these past years, she has, uh, served Mill Creek and prior to that, served in other districts. So she comes from a family of educators and I believe that her mom, uh, Dorelia, is that right? Um, is with us today, was also an educator. And, uh, as, as the board maybe remember just yesterday, uh, she was also recognized yesterday as the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Madison City Teacher of the Year. So we are honored to recognize and welcome to the administrative family, Kylie Reichardt. Kylie, congratulations. If you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you so much, Dr. Nichols and Mr. Brown and to the Board of Education. And also I, I feel you, I'm so excited. Um, I did grow up in a home of educators and, um, I don't remember a time when, um, I did not want to be a teacher. And very early on in my career, um, that included, um, administration as well. So I've been doing this a long time and this has been, um, a dream of mine. And so, um, I did teach in Atlanta for quite some time, um, in a suburb of Atlanta. And, uh, moving to the Madison City School District was the best decision I ever made, uh, both personally and professionally. I have, uh, loved it, um, every day that I've been here. And that is largely due to the amazing faculty and staff and, um, students and parents at Mill Creek Elementary. So I am so excited to continue in this journey at Mill Creek. Um, and, uh, I have very big shoes to fill. I'm so appreciative to my mentor, uh, Carl Fernandez. But also I'm so excited, um, to join, um, Demetrius Patterson and, um, Carmen Taylor Tub, um, and work alongside, um, these awesome women. And, um, it is an amazing day to be a maverick today. It's a very special day and, um, we have so much work to do before next week. So I'm excited, um, to jump right in. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Like if you win Teacher of the Year, aren't you supposed to do a lot of traveling to like teach others?
It works like that.
Okay.
Only at the state level.
Okay.
They give you a car and everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Anything else on personnel actions?
No, sir.
Nothing else on personal, personnel actions. It's back to you, Dr. Nichols, for superintendent comments.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. First of all, um, a few comments I'd like to make. Um, one, as of today, I think we have reached the twelve thousand student mark and somewhere around fifteen hundred new students this summer. Uh, almost half of those are kindergarten and pre-K, but the other half are brand new students, uh, to the district. Uh, so we're excited. We have, um, less than four hundred that haven't re-enrolled, which this time of the year, they tell me that's good around here. Um, I was panicking a few weeks ago when we had a couple of thousand. So we're down to just a few per grade. Um, but we, we have, as you know, we have a lot of people that move into Madison and move out of Madison. And, um, so we're, we're gaining bodies as we did several years ago and got kind of back to normal in that. Uh, with that, we're watching each grade level and having to make some adjustments about, uh, uh, teachers and class sizes and those things. And we're monitoring that, uh, daily. We'll get an update tonight on enrollments today, but we've been averaging about eighty new students a day. Uh, so, uh, we'll adjust that as we look at it tomorrow. Also, um, I'm excited, we got our advanced placement scores back. And, um, we'll give you more detail of those. Uh, Dr. Donaldson's going to send you, uh, probably more charts than you can imagine on that. But I'll just give you a thirty thousand foot view. We offered thirty-two AP, uh, courses last year. And in sixteen of those courses, uh, we had an increase of percentage in passing scores. And in five courses, the percent, uh, remained the same. So twenty-one out of thirty-two, uh, and some of those that didn't grow were very small, but most of them had an increase. There was a, a four percent increase from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two school year and scores of receiving a five, the top score. We had a four percent increase. Twenty-two percent of our students had a five on their AP score last year. And there was a three percent increase overall for the district overall in earning scores, three, four and five. So our passing as a district overall grew three percent. A little breakdown of that, sixteen percent of the students in the tenth grade scored a three or higher. Um, twenty-seven percent of the eleventh graders scored a three or higher. Twenty percent of twelfth graders scored a three or higher. And forty-one percent of the students in the graduating class that took the AP's exam scored, uh, higher on at least one AP exam than they did during their high school career. So, uh, I can't say enough about our AP teachers, um, and our staff. But also say you don't get a great AP score just because of the one year. You get it because of great middle school teachers and great elementary school teachers who get those kids prepared and start through that. So, um, proud of all of our teachers. It's just like when a student graduates, everybody has a part to play in that. And so I'm just, uh, proud for our team and we will break that data out even more and let you know how that looks. But, um, I appreciate, uh, our, our curriculum staff, but I appreciate all of our teachers for helping our students. Uh, we have a high percentage, almost seventy percent of our students take an AP course. Uh, and that's, that's huge, I promise you, looking across the district, uh, and across the state. That's, that's really great. Uh, but the fact that when those students take that such a high percentage pass with the three, four, five, uh, is great. So I'm proud of our folks and I want to acknowledge them for that. We will have a re-entry plan coming out tomorrow. Uh, we'll talk about procedures and protocols. One of the things someone asked tonight was about quarantining and how we would address students if they, uh, have to be made up. That'll be part of that plan so that we will work through schoolology and also, uh, work with our teachers to develop a plan that our curriculum staff feels is good to help anyone that has to be, uh, quarantined. So I, I, that is on our list to do and information coming out. Um, also, um, I would say to folks, I, I understand that COVID's different each year. This is not an easy decision. I promise you that I stay up and read as much as I can in information. I know that last year, as we were at the infection rate about where we are now, we chose to start, or I chose to start a virtual, while a hundred and thirty-seven other school districts in the state went face to face from the start of school. And they did it without any problem. And I'll be honest and say, if I had known then what I know now, I would have started everybody the first day of school last year. But I didn't know then what I know now. And so I think we've learned some things. Do we know it all? Absolutely not. Um, we're looking at options. We've had parents who've requested, could we look at the possibility in elementary school of, of putting students together whose parents wish that they are masked compared to those that do not? And try to look at that on a classroom basis. And we're looking into that. So they, there'll be some things that we're continuing to look at. Um, I'd like to tell folks, we'll go all the way through the school year and we won't have to change where we are. But I can't say that either. And, uh, just as I made that decision based on what I had as information last year, if I need to make one a week from now that's different than that, then I'm open to doing that. Um, so I feel good about where we're starting right now. If I didn't, I would make a change in that. I know there are districts around the state, about nine now out of a hundred and forty, who have chosen to start with masks. I also know that a hundred and thirty districts across the state are going to start like we're starting next week. We all may make a change, um, but we are constantly working, uh, working with Mr. Terrell, Mr. Jones, Nurse Bonnie. Uh, I did send a letter today to, uh, Dr. Harris and Dr. Landers in our county and asked them several questions. Uh, my first question was if they feel strongly about masking, why have they not mandated? And do they have the authority? Uh, and if they don't have the authority, then I'm assuming that they can't do that unless the governor gives them that authority. And if they feel like the governor is wrong, why have they not addressed that? For them, I, I, I take it personally in one way for them to tell us that we have to make that decision as educators. That would be like me sitting here today and saying, Mr. Brown gets to make that decision for Liberty Middle School and Carmen gets to make it for Mill Creek. That wouldn't be fair to them. But I've been given that as, as the under hundred, other hundred and forty superintendents have. And I'm doing my best to make the best decision I can. And today I think the best decision is to start with mask optional. Now, that doesn't mean that I won't encourage people to wear masks. Um, I'm a highly encourage people to wear masks. But I also understand that parents send their children to school and we're here to educate them. And last year at this time, we had a mandate to make people wear masks and we don't have that this year. So I'm waiting to hear back from Dr. Harris and Dr. Landers. Uh, I remember that Dr. Landers put a mask ordinance in place for this county prior to the state. So I'm waiting to get some answers back from them on their feelings about what they choose to do. But until that time, um, I'm going to make the best decision I can and we're going to do the best we can. And next week, we plan to start, as of today, mask optional, but that can change. And so I just say that. Yesterday we had our institute day and, um, we brought kids out on stage. We brought kids that represented Madison City Schools, all eighty-six languages of kids. We're, we're a very diverse community and we have eighty-six different languages. People come from all over the globe, uh, to be here and to want to live here. And I would say to anyone that I expect every person in our school district to take care and to treat kids with respect. Now, will we allow kids to learn to think? Yes, we will. And we will not criticize their thinking because each person's thinking is their own and it comes from what they learn and their families that they come to. But we also respect other people who may think differently than we do. But no child should ever be able, be made to feel bad for any reason based on anything as our policy says should be discriminated against based on their race or their color, their religion or any of those things. They should never be made to feel bad for that. And if they do, then I will be glad to do what we always do if that situation were to ever arise. And that is to investigate those incidences where they happen and correct that from happening again. So we're going to have a great year. I don't know how any of our folks could not stand on that, sit in that auditorium yesterday and see those little kids' faces and not be ready to start the school year next week when all the kids come. Uh, I'm ready. I'm ready for them to start back and ready to see the excitement. Now, we may have a little dust in a few places still. We're, Mr. Jones and Mr. Terrell, and they have worked diligently to try to get Horizon and Heritage ready to go. And we are getting closer every minute. Uh, and they have worked as hard as they can. And we've got folks working day and night over there to clean floors and get rooms ready and get moved in. I'm not saying there might not be a little dust still when we get over there next week. So if parents go to open house and there's a little more dust than normal someplace, just give us a few extra days. We're working at as fast as we can. The fact that we could put seventy-two new air conditioning units in Horizon Elementary School this summer and do it with, with, with school at all is an amazing thing. And it says a lot about our folks that we work with and that we gave our bid to. But if anybody's building anything right now, they know getting supplies and materials is quite a challenge. And I can tell you that a few weeks ago, we were wondering if those seventy-two units would be here. We even had a plan about how we might move Horizon kids to West Madison because we didn't know if we would have those seventy-two units. But they came in and they're there and water's getting ready to get started. Is that right, Mr. Terrell? And so ceiling tiles are going back in and we've been given opportunity to get back in the building. And so cleaning, we were over there last night and we had crews in there at night waxing floors. And the same thing's true with Midtown. We will be ready. Uh, well, there, there could still be a window that needs to be cleaned when we get there. Our little dust in a corner from, from the construction. But, uh, but it'll be ready and we'll be in. Uh, but, uh, and, and it doesn't happen by accident. We, we've got great folks that work with us. Um, we have a great architect. We have great engineering, design people. And, uh, and next summer we'll be at it again. Cause next summer, uh, Rainbow and Columbia will get new air conditioning units. We're using our bond money we got from the state to upgrade HVAC. So this time next year, we'll be doing it again. And, uh, but I'm confident our team will make sure that it gets happening. And then I know down the road, we've got Liberty that's on, on the board there, Mr. Brown. And, uh, when we get all that done, we're going to have, you know, there's never a plaque for the board or anybody on the front of a school that says in two thousand and twenty-one, we put in an HVAC system. That's, I don't, you know, nobody ever gets too excited about a new roof. Uh, we're putting one of those at Horizon too. But if we don't do that, our buildings suffer and in the long haul, they don't last. And so I'm just thankful that we have this. And so I'm just thankful that we have this opportunity and the money that we've gotten to use it to upgrade our facilities that are not as new and to get them in good shape. So I appreciate our folks and all the hard work. Officer Tate's with us tonight. Appreciate you, Officer Tate. Love our SROs. Appreciate you and all the men and women you represent, the Madison Police Department, what you do to keep our streets safe and to keep us safe. And I appreciate you working with our kids and uh, and helping uh us at the school level. So we thank you for that as well, and please let all the other folks know and how much I think they do, and I try to make sure they know that. But we appreciate you and all the men and women of the force and, and your protection and fire that come out and take care of us and everybody else. So with that said, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols. Move to board comments. We'll start with you, Ms. Lesman.
Thank you. Um, I think Dr. Nichols pretty much wrapped up everything. Um, I just wanna thank you, Dr. Nichols, and your staff again for making these tough decisions and really trying to accommodate. Um, it's, it is, there are a lot of tough decisions. And as a parent, we have tough decisions to make as well. I think this, you know, possibly putting the, the people in the classroom with the masks together, you know, that's another way you're trying to accommodate. And we as parents can also encourage our child, if, how you feel, if you want them to wear a mask, you know, with the CDC, that the guidelines, we can encourage that to them. And um, and, and like Dr. Newberry had said, you know, vaccinations, let's, i- if you are able to get vaccinated, that's how we can decrease the spread. So uh, we appreciate the public comments. We do listen. And like Dr. Nichols said, things could change in an hour tomorrow. We just, we have to be prepared, and we are listening, and we, we see all, we're trying to accommodate. And yesterday was Institute Day. It was my very first Institute Day I got to attend, and it was, I will have to say, there was a lot of energy. It got me all excited. Um, I don't know as excited as uh, with Ms. Gaines, um, her challenge about uh subbing in a class. I don't know if I'm that excited yet. Uh, maybe an hour or something. Um, but she had challenged the administrators to sub for one full day in the classroom just to, to get an idea or to, to go back and, and refresh your mind on that. So um, Dr. Nichols accepted it. Just saying. Um, and then I'd like to say congratulations to uh Ms. Odom. I think you're gonna be, where'd you go? You're gonna be a wonderful asset to Liberty. You seem very excited and just positive, and so you're gonna fit right in. Thank you. Thank you for stepping up. And um, also to Ms. Riker. Congratulations on many levels. And also, not only did you get the Teacher of the Year, and you're gonna be Assistant Principal, um, she also was recognized yesterday for her five years of service in Madison City Schools. And I know that because I had to make sure I was saying your name right. So congratulations on all, all many levels. So um, and I think that is all I have to say. Thank you all again for coming out tonight. Oh, oh, wait, one more thing. PTA, thank you for coming out. I am a huge proponent for PTA. And like I said at the last meeting, you know, parent involvement really does increase student success. So um, I would like to uh give you my membership later tonight if you'll see me for the Madison Mega PTA. I think that's a neat idea. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lesman. Mr. Halsey?
Um, sorry, caught me making notes. Uh, I do wanna thank everyone who made public comments tonight. Uh, we do take those seriously. Thank you for your emails. Thank you for your comments and for voicing your, your thoughts on issues. And thanks again, Ms. Bachelor, for coming out for the PTA reminder. That is an important initiative that all of our parents need to get behind. It does so much for our schools, and I thank you for your leadership and coordinating everything. Uh, congratulations again to Ms. Odom and Ms. Riker on your new roles. Ms. Riker, just an exciting couple of days for you. A lot of big stuff going on. Uh, uh, but I know both of you are gonna excel in your new roles, and congratulations again. Um, I wanna, Dr. Nichols, I wanna take a minute to thank you for your leadership, you know, on all things, but especially with the COVID issue. I think it's worth repeating and reminding everyone that Dr. Nichols did something last year a pop, a lot of people probably wouldn't wanna do. He entered a superintendent job in the middle of a pandemic, and from day one, he had a plan. And I can assure you, every decision he makes is not made lightly. He consults a variety of experts. He gets a lot of hard data, good sound data, to make a decision. I think even more impressive, he makes a decision, he goes with it, but he recognizes conditions change, and he's always willing to make a change when the conditions change. So I just thank you for all the leadership you provided so far, working with your team to get those things done. And I know that we'll have a good plan, and I know that you will make that plan adaptable as needed. I also want to congratulate you and all your team on putting together an outstanding Institute Day yesterday. Um, it was very energetic, very exciting. We had a great speaker to kick off the year. It was great to acknowledge our teachers and their, our staff members and their years of service. It was the first time in a long time I've done the YMCA dance. It was my first time I ever did the YMCA dance in a suit and tie, so I'll always remember that. But it was a very energetic way to kick off the year. So as we move into the new school year, I think we're, we're going in on a high note. Just thank you again for all your hard work and the, the excitement, the passion that you brought to Institute Day yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halsey. Mr. Cummings?
I wanna thank the PTA for coming out. Uh, Ms. Walker, Ms. Black, I am going to also sign up for a mega member. Um, me and my wife, we used to sign up for PTA, but I didn't know that there was a mega membership. And that's a great idea, and we definitely count on seeing them on that as well. Um, I also wanna thank everyone for coming out and voicing their concerns. Um, I just wanted to let you know that we definitely listen to all concerns. We've received countless emails that we've constantly reading. Um, and just, just want you to know that we hear you and we take all concerns seriously. Um, next, I wanna congratulate Ms. Odom and Ms. Riker. Congratulations. I love the fact that you brought up that you're being developed within the system. And when you guys both approached the podium, you got a leadership presence and a confidence and an excitement about you guys only ready to start. And I, I think that just speaks volume on the, the surrounding people that helped develop you guys and give you guys these opportunities. And, you know, speaking of that, it just reminds me about, you know, we was in discussions about some salary schedules, and I hope we able to get some salary schedules for the central office and the top leadership staff. But we were reviewing some of that. Um, hopefully, we can do that soon. But then having the ability to promote from within and then watching future, as Mr. Ferrer would say, future all-stars coming to leadership is just an outstanding feeling. And I just wanna thank you guys for that.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Well said. Mr. Ferrer?
Well, I guess I got, I got to follow all of this. So I, I'm the one today who is gonna be short. So I echo everything everybody said. Ms. Alessander, Ms. Morales, um, Ms. Vincent, Ms. Mayberry, we listen. One thing you will learn about us is whatever we do, we take a lot of consideration. Like Mr. Halsey said, we're smart enough to know that we can make decisions based on what we know today. And we are able and have the capability to adapt when it's needed. So we promise you, we're listening. If we need to change, I believe, like I said, and, and this is something we took when we were doing last year, when we were evaluating who we were gonna hire, we hired the right person at the hi, at the right time to handle a pandemic. I haven't changed my mind. I think he was, and I think he is. I promise you that he is communicating with us. He's communicating with everybody. And he's making sure that he has all the information to make the right decision for all students. Ms. Parker, we got policies in place to make sure all students are taken care of. We don't teach for a specific sector. We teach for all. We make sure that every student, when they come here, they're taken care of, and they make sure their value. So I promise you, whatever curriculum we have, if there's an issue with it, if you bring it to us, we will correct it. We got a professional staff that is not only has an understanding of, of basic curriculum from the state, but they create a professional curriculum. And it's so bedded and it's so enriched that I'm pretty sure they're making sure that whatever is presented to the teachers before it becomes, or becomes, before it's approved by us, is something that is gonna be for every student. We listen. We are aware of it. If something needs to be changed, it will be taken care of. And one thing I, I, just to touch on Mr. Cummings, just to correct something, Ms. Riker. The best decision was not for you to be hired. It was for us to hire you. And it's for you to, Ms. Odom. I, I, it's just funny, because we tend to go to school visits. We do, we tend to go, go to camps. We tend to see, uh, go to events, and we always see you guys there. And we recognize excellence, and we know, and we, even though we sit here and we're not in the school, we are aware of superstars. And it's always, it's always amazing when you know that you have put in the work and you're recognized. I remember um, when, when the conversation, when, when we first, I, I think, and I always, and I said this with Mr. Fernandez, when, when you guys lose somebody, the, the cool thing about Madison City School is you lose somebody, but you gain somebody else. We do such a great job to make sure that our roster is, is, is deep. What I mean by that is, we, we, we might lose somebody, or we might promote somebody, but we got three or four or five people that can step in that role. And lastly, uh, when I was a councilman, I think my biggest asset before I became a, uh, involved with the Board of Education was the PTA. The PTA in Columbia helped me a lot understand the needs of my community. Uh, they were able to tell me, hey, Louis, this is, this part of your community needs some help. Uh, if, if we needed, if I needed something in regards to a tutor or something, a, a need, the PTA was always there. They brought supplies. They worked with me as a councilman, and we truly appreciate you. You have a similar role than we do. You are a spokesman for the community. And just like we do, we appreciate everything you do. And if we can do anything to put the voice out, to help you guys gain more members and be more involved and communicate and pass the importance of, of, of events and, and communicating with the parents, we, we will do whatever it needs to be done. So thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Riker.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrer. I wanna, I do wanna thank the, the public uh for coming out for the emails. Uh, we've received a lot of emails on both sides, and, and, you know, the, the issues are real, and we understand that. And we thank you. We, I thank you, Board, for, uh, for weighing in on those, on those emails and our discussions and our thoughts. And uh, and as, as you, Board, have said, and I wanna thank you, Dr. Nichols, for your, your leadership through this. And, and none of this is easy, and uh, the decisions are not made easily, and they're not made flippantly. And in addition to that, with you and, and your wonderful staff, you're, you're running a school district. You're building schools. You're renovating schools. Uh, the teachers are learning, uh, the new software, uh, to, to communicate those results out to the parents. Um, it's, it's a lot of hats to wear, and it's a, it's a massive time commitment, and, and it is done uh by this district better than most, likely better than everybody else in this state. And, and that, that does not go unrecognized. And so I, I just, I thank all the time and effort that, uh, that, that your team puts into it. And I, I know your decisions are, are made with the head and the heart, and uh, and, and every child is important to you. I appreciate that. I want to say congratulations to Ms. Odom and Ms. Riker. Your uh, your, your promotions are very well-deserved. You've earned them. And uh, and, and through your great work with our children, I mean, that's, you're, you are a, a, a strategic piece of, of, of Madison City Schools. And, and you are, you are going to bring up other leaders like yourself underneath you. And, and, and uh, you're also going to, going to, uh, you know, care for those kids. And, and uh, and, and you're just, you're, you're in, you're in, you're in it for the right reasons, and uh, and your performance shows that every day. And thank you for, uh, for, for taking this new role. Uh, speaking of running a district during a pandemic, you're, you're reading of the uh AP growth. And I'm sure as other data comes in, we're gonna have lots of other areas that show, show great growth through a tremendously difficult, challenging year. Uh, where we had, you know, we had many kids that were, that were quarantined for uh, you know, two different times. And so, so they missed, they missed a month of, of uh, in, if they were in person. They missed a month of that, and they were having to, to transition back and forth. Uh, it, it just, it again speaks volumes on the, uh, the dedication of our teaching staff to, uh, to work through, through the issues and the flexibility that they've had. I do apologize for missing Institute Day. Uh, I, 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 it's such an exciting day. Um, I had, I had prior engagements and uh, and, but I, I apologize because, um, I mean, I know you, you, you guys were called to be a teacher, and, and I was not. But, but you can sit up there and get so energized, you almost can trick yourself into thinking, I can at least walk into the classroom. Make it maybe five minutes. But uh, but I apologize for missing it, and uh, I understand it was, it was a, a great, uh, great kickoff to the year. Uh, we go through the schedule. As uh, as our PTA knows, Monday is open house. That I am sure they will be, uh, they will be there in force along with uh, with all of the rest of our staff. Uh, I'm excited. Uh, I'm excited to get out. Uh, as I said, we had a special call meeting on, on Tuesday. So if you tuned into that, you're, you're hearing some of my repeats, but I'm very excited about open house. Uh, there's, there's, there's nothing more exciting than that, the bustle of the, of all our kids coming back into, into the classrooms and, and learning, learning their new teachers and seeing their old friends. And, and uh, it's just a, just a great, exciting day. First day of school's on Wednesday. That's going to be exciting. And uh, and on a less exciting note, we have a finance committee meeting on August tenth.
Well, that's exciting to me.
Followed by a school board meeting here in this boardroom on August tenth. And I don't have anything else. Does anybody have any go-bags?
Quick question. You know, you brought up the AP scores, and then you mentioned the seniors percentages. As a senior, how many times do you get to take that to try to score your college credits? Do you get to take that, that test again after you graduate?
No, sir. Just one time. Just one. It's not like the ACT. You, you sit on one, on the board for one day.
Okay. Got it. That's my excuse.
Well, with nothing further, Board, I'll entertain a motion and a second to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Halsey and a second by Mr. Cummings. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?